The Senate will come to order. The senators will please take their seats. Those persons not entitled to the privilege of the floor will please retire to the gallery. The senators and all in attendance will stand and be led in prayer by the Reverend Teresa K. McRoberts, Jubilee Ministries, North Chesterfield, Richmond, Virginia. Following the prayer, everyone will remain standing and be led in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of the United States of America by Senate Page Leila Abrams.
Creator and Sustainer of life, we gather in your presence and ask to see and to feel your life-giving spirit and your unfathomable wisdom at work here. In the midst of this legislative body and within the hearts and minds of these honorable members of the Senate of the Commonwealth of Virginia, may your spirit guide us, may your strength undergird us, and may your compassion for the least and the lost be evident through us. Thank you for each senator and for his or her staff and team members. Thank you for bringing these men and women to the work of reviewing and making laws on behalf of all Virginians. May their dedication and their decisions reflect their identity as children of the creative force. And I pray you would keep true in them the values that lead to respectful community, courageous discourse, and preservation of life and liberty. As the legislative work continues, remind us of the dignity, safety, and worthiness of all people of the Commonwealth. Open our eyes to new ways of approaching issues. Give us hearts to seek reconciliation where the societal forces promote division. Empower these leaders to see past the currents of death, disease, and destruction that threaten so many lives. And by your power, grace, and mercy, lead our senators to seek divine will in their decisions. And as the Senate seeks divine will, may this body receive the gift of discernment and act in ways that uphold human dignity, affirm the value of human diversity, and invest wisely the resources with which it has been entrusted. As people elected and set apart to represent the best interests of the communities and individuals of Virginia, may these leaders experience your blessing as the strength to speak and act in accordance with divine presence and consistent with the love that Almighty Creator has for every creature on this earth. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The clerk will call the roll. All those in attendance will please record their vote. Clerk will close the roll.
You have a quorum, Mr. President. Senate Journal from Monday, January 27, 2020.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The senior senator from Fairfax, Senator Sasslaw, moves that the reading of the Journal be waived. All in favor of waiving the reading of the Journal will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, thirty-four, noes six.
Ayes, thirty-four, noes six. The reading of the Journal is waived. Clerk, report any communication from the House of Delegates. The senior senator from Fairfax, Senator Sasslaw.
Mr. President, I move we waive the reading of the Journal from the House of Delegates.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the reading of the communication from the House of Delegates be waived? All in favor of waiving the reading will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, thirty-six, noes four.
Ayes, thirty-six, noes four. The reading of the communication from the House of Delegates is waived. Clerk, report any communication from the governor.
We have not received any.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now I'd like to call on the senior senator from Fairfax, Senator Sasslaw.
Mr. President, I move that we suspend the rules and grant the privileges of the floor to distinguished persons.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the rules be suspended and the privileges of the floor be granted to distinguished persons? All in favor of the motion will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, forty, noes zero.
Ayes, forty, noes zero. The rules are suspended. The privileges of the floor are granted. The chair recognizes the senior senator from Fairfax, Senator Sasslaw, for the purpose of presenting our distinguished guests.
Mr. President, members of the Senate, we're joined here today by the distinguished members of our world championship Washington Nationals baseball team. President of Baseball Operations and General Manager Mike Rizzo. There, that's the trophy.
Thank you.
Jennifer Giglio, who's the Vice President of Communications and a constituent of Senator Suravel. Okay. And Tawana West, who's the manager of Public Safety and Security. Right here. I would ask now, does the clerk have, clerk has the copy of the resolution?
Yes, sir.
Clerk will now read a copy of the resolution.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Senate Joint Resolution Number 62, Commending the Washington Nationals. Whereas the Washington Nationals of Major League Baseball won the 2019 World Series on October 30, 2019, defeating the Houston Astros in seven games; and whereas the last time a Major League Baseball team from Washington, D.C., won a World Series was nearly a century ago. Following years without baseball in the nation's capital, multiple 100-loss seasons, and a series of painful playoffs defeats, the victory was a long-awaited opportunity for fans in the Capital Region and throughout the Commonwealth to rejoice. And whereas during the season, the Washington Nationals' motto was "Stay in the Fight." After starting the year with a disappointing 19-31 record, the team nonetheless finished the regular season with 93 wins, earning a playoff berth and starting its march to the World Series. With its October triumph, the team became only the second club in Major League Baseball history to win it all after being 12 games below .500. And whereas the relentless spirit that lifted the team into the playoffs carried them to the very end, with the Washington Nationals posting five come-from-behind wins in elimination games in the 2019 postseason, including an astounding seventh-inning comeback in Game Seven of the World Series; and whereas, as testament to the improbable and historic nature of this season, the Washington Nationals became the only club in Major League Baseball history to win three winner-take-all games in the same postseason, and to win every game of a seven-game series on the road. And whereas this remarkable accomplishment was a whole-team effort, highlighted by dominant pitching from Patrick Corbin, Anibal Sanchez, Max Schiser, and Stephen Strasburg, and clutch hitting from Adam Eaton, Howie Kendrick, Anthony Rendon, and Juan Soto; and whereas the Commonwealth was well-represented on the Washington Nationals' World Series Championship roster, with outstanding contributions from University of Virginia alumni Sean Doolittle, Ryan Zimmerman, and Virginia native Daniel Hudson; and whereas the 2019 Washington Nationals would not only be remembered for the caliber of their play, but for the much-appreciated levity they brought to the game through their on-field rituals and celebrations, including dugout dances and baby shark sing-alongs. Whereas the Washington Nationals demonstrated to young players all over the world what can be accomplished through grit and determination, and gave fans a moment they will cherish for the rest of their lives, now therefore, be it resolved by the Senate, the House of Delegates concurring, that the General Assembly hereby commend the Washington Nationals of Major League Baseball, 2019 World Series Champions, on the occasion of their monumental victory. And be it resolved further, that the clerk of the Senate prepare a copy of this resolution for presentation to the Lerner family, principal owners of the Washington Nationals, and as an expression of the General Assembly's admiration for the team's success and its contributions to the Commonwealth.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Senior Senator from Fairfax, Senator Sasslaw.
Mr. President, before you invite them up front for ceremonial presentation, I just wanted to remark, I was there through all the misery that the clerk mentioned. Not quite, not quite 100 years, but almost. And, you know, we had the franchise move to Minnesota, then we got another one that moved to Texas, and then we went about 36 years without a franchise, and then I think it was Toronto, was it Toronto or Montreal? Montreal came down there, and I really have to tell you, President Rizzo has done just a fabulous job in building a World Series championship team. And we, we can't thank you enough for enough times.
Mr. President. Thank the senator. And with that, thank you, Madam Clerk. We would like to invite our World Series Nationals to the front of the Senate to be honored. Mike Rizzo, Jennifer Giglio, Carter Giglio, and Tawana West, please come to the front. Congratulations, Tom Gosselin. Congratulations. Well, first of all, on behalf of all 40 senators, our Senate staff, our pages, and the Commonwealth of Virginia, we would like to congratulate you all on an extraordinary season, and as Senator Sasslaw said, on an extraordinary journey. You really inspired an entire country and gave us all hope, and when people counted you out, you stayed in the fight, and you eventually won the fight, and that's a lesson for every single one of us. So we are grateful to you. I'll trade you this wonderful resolution for that trophy. And you can take this home, I'll take that home. But I was told we can't touch the trophy at the end. That's the rule. But we can certainly be here to celebrate you all. So thank you for all that you've done for the Commonwealth of Virginia, for this region, for the country. You're welcome back here anytime. And I would ask everyone to please join me in extending the warmest welcome of the Senate and our heartiest congratulations of the Commonwealth of Virginia to the World Series Champion, Washington Nationals. Now, everyone can join us in a rendition of Baby Shark. You all ready? Baby Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo, doo-doo. Baby Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo. You can do better than that. Go ahead, Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo. Baby Shark. All right, very good. God bless you guys. Thank you. The Senate will be at ease. You all ready? Baby Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo, doo-doo. You can do better than that. Go ahead, Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo. Baby Shark. All right, very good. God bless you guys. Thank you. The Senate will be at ease. Now, everyone can join us in a rendition of Baby Shark. You all ready? Baby Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo, doo-doo. Baby Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo. You can do better than that. Go ahead, Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo. Baby Shark. All right, very good. God bless you guys. Thank you. The Senate will be at ease. Now, everyone can join us in a rendition of Baby Shark. You all ready? Baby Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo, doo-doo. Baby Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo. You can do better than that. Go ahead, Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo. Baby Shark. All right, very good. God bless you guys. Thank you. The Senate will be at ease. Now, everyone can join us in a rendition of Baby Shark. You all ready? Baby Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo, doo-doo. Baby Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo. You can do better than that. Go ahead, Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo. Baby Shark. All right, very good. God bless you guys. Thank you. The Senate will be at ease. Now, everyone can join us in a rendition of Baby Shark. You all ready? Baby Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo, doo-doo. Baby Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo. You can do better than that. Go ahead, Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo. Baby Shark. All right, very good. God bless you guys. Thank you. The Senate will be at ease. Now, everyone can join us in a rendition of Baby Shark. You all ready? Baby Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo, doo-doo. Baby Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo. You can do better than that. Go ahead, Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo. Baby Shark. All right, very good. God bless you guys. Thank you. The Senate will be at ease. Now, everyone can join us in a rendition of Baby Shark. You all ready? Baby Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo, doo-doo. Baby Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo. You can do better than that. Go ahead, Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo. Baby Shark. All right, very good. God bless you guys. Thank you. The Senate will be at ease. Now, everyone can join us in a rendition of Baby Shark. You all ready? Baby Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo, doo-doo. Baby Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo. You can do better than that. Go ahead, Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo. Baby Shark. All right, very good. God bless you guys. Thank you. The Senate will be at ease. Now, everyone can join us in a rendition of Baby Shark. You all ready? Baby Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo, doo-doo. Baby Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo. You can do better than that. Go ahead, Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo. Baby Shark. All right, very good. God bless you guys. Thank you. The Senate will be at ease. Now, everyone can join us in a rendition of Baby Shark. You all ready? Baby Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo, doo-doo. Baby Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo. You can do better than that. Go ahead, Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo. Baby Shark. All right, very good. God bless you guys. Thank you. The Senate will be at ease. Now, everyone can join us in a rendition of Baby Shark. You all ready? Baby Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo, doo-doo. Baby Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo. You can do better than that. Go ahead, Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo. Baby Shark. All right, very good. God bless you guys. Thank you. The Senate will be at ease. Now, everyone can join us in a rendition of Baby Shark. You all ready? Baby Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo, doo-doo. Baby Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo. You can do better than that. Go ahead, Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo. Baby Shark. All right, very good. God bless you guys. Thank you. The Senate will be at ease. Now, everyone can join us in a rendition of Baby Shark. You all ready? Baby Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo, doo-doo. Baby Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo. You can do better than that. Go ahead, Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo. Baby Shark. All right, very good. God bless you guys. Thank you. The Senate will be at ease. Now, everyone can join us in a rendition of Baby Shark. You all ready? Baby Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo, doo-doo. Baby Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo. You can do better than that. Go ahead, Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo. Baby Shark. All right, very good. God bless you guys. Thank you. The Senate will be at ease. Now, everyone can join us in a rendition of Baby Shark. You all ready? Baby Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo, doo-doo. Baby Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo. You can do better than that. Go ahead, Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo. Baby Shark. All right, very good. God bless you guys. Thank you. The Senate will be at ease. Now, everyone can join us in a rendition of Baby Shark. You all ready? Baby Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo, doo-doo. Baby Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo. You can do better than that. Go ahead, Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo. Baby Shark. All right, very good. God bless you guys. Thank you. The Senate will be at ease. Now, everyone can join us in a rendition of Baby Shark. You all ready? Baby Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo, doo-doo. Baby Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo. You can do better than that. Go ahead, Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo. Baby Shark. All right, very good. God bless you guys. Thank you. The Senate will be at ease. Now, everyone can join us in a rendition of Baby Shark. You all ready? Baby Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo, doo-doo. Baby Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo. You can do better than that. Go ahead, Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo. Baby Shark. All right, very good. God bless you guys. Thank you. The Senate will be at ease. Now, everyone can join us in a rendition of Baby Shark. You all ready? Baby Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo, doo-doo. Baby Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo. You can do better than that. Go ahead, Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo. Baby Shark. All right, very good. God bless you guys. Thank you. The Senate will be at ease. Now, everyone can join us in a rendition of Baby Shark. You all ready? Baby Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo, doo-doo. Baby Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo. You can do better than that. Go ahead, Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo. Baby Shark. All right, very good. God bless you guys. Thank you. The Senate will be at ease. Now, everyone can join us in a rendition of Baby Shark. You all ready? Baby Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo, doo-doo. Baby Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo. You can do better than that. Go ahead, Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo. Baby Shark. All right, very good. God bless you guys. Thank you. The Senate will be at ease. Now, everyone can join us in a rendition of Baby Shark. You all ready? Baby Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo, doo-doo. Baby Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo. You can do better than that. Go ahead, Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo. Baby Shark. All right, very good. God bless you guys. Thank you. The Senate will be at ease. Now, everyone can join us in a rendition of Baby Shark. You all ready? Baby Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo, doo-doo. Baby Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo. You can do better than that. Go ahead, Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo. Baby Shark. All right, very good. God bless you guys. Thank you. The Senate will be at ease. Now, everyone can join us in a rendition of Baby Shark. You all ready? Baby Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo, doo-doo. Baby Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo. You can do better than that. Go ahead, Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo. Baby Shark. All right, very good. God bless you guys. Thank you. The Senate will be at ease. Now, everyone can join us in a rendition of Baby Shark. You all ready? Baby Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo, doo-doo. Baby Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo. You can do better than that. Go ahead, Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo. Baby Shark. All right, very good. God bless you guys. Thank you. The Senate will be at ease. Now, everyone can join us in a rendition of Baby Shark. You all ready? Baby Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo, doo-doo. Baby Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo. You can do better than that. Go ahead, Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo. Baby Shark. All right, very good. God bless you guys. Thank you. The Senate will be at ease. Now, everyone can join us in a rendition of Baby Shark. You all ready? Baby Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo, doo-doo. Baby Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo. You can do better than that. Go ahead, Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo. Baby Shark. All right, very good. God bless you guys. Thank you. The Senate will be at ease. Now, everyone can join us in a rendition of Baby Shark. You all ready? Baby Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo, doo-doo. Baby Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo. You can do better than that. Go ahead, Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo. Baby Shark. All right, very good. God bless you guys. Thank you. The Senate will be at ease. Now, everyone can join us in a rendition of Baby Shark. You all ready? Baby Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo, doo-doo. Baby Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo. You can do better than that. Go ahead, Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo. Baby Shark. All right, very good. God bless you guys. Thank you. The Senate will be at ease. Now, everyone can join us in a rendition of Baby Shark. You all ready? Baby Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo, doo-doo. Baby Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo. You can do better than that. Go ahead, Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo. Baby Shark. All right, very good. God bless you guys. Thank you. The Senate will be at ease. Now, everyone can join us in a rendition of Baby Shark. You all ready? Baby Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo, doo-doo. Baby Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo. You can do better than that. Go ahead, Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo. Baby Shark. All right, very good. God bless you guys. Thank you. The Senate will be at ease. Now, everyone can join us in a rendition of Baby Shark. You all ready? Baby Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo, doo-doo. Baby Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo. You can do better than that. Go ahead, Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo. Baby Shark. All right, very good. God bless you guys. Thank you. The Senate will be at ease. Now, everyone can join us in a rendition of Baby Shark. You all ready? Baby Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo, doo-doo. Baby Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo. You can do better than that. Go ahead, Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo. Baby Shark. All right, very good. God bless you guys. Thank you. The Senate will be at ease. Now, everyone can join us in a rendition of Baby Shark. You all ready? Baby Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo, doo-doo. Baby Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo. You can do better than that. Go ahead, Shark, doo-doo-doo-doo.[1227.13]
The Senate will come to order. The senators will please take their seats. Those persons not entitled to the privilege of the floor will please retire to the gallery. Now comes the time in the morning hour where we have the privilege and the pleasure of welcoming our distinguished guests with us here in the Senate Gallery. I would give my usual reminder, the way this will proceed is that a senator will stand up and recognize an individual or group. I will then offer the warm welcome of the Senate. At the very end, we will all applaud together. And I'd like to begin by recognizing the senator from Lynchburg. Not back yet? Okay. The senator from Prince William County, Senator McPike.
Mr. President, I rise for the purpose of an introduction.
Senator, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today in the gallery, we have our Greater Prince William Young Leaders Program and students in attendance. Each year, I bring high school students down from the 29th District to watch us work and watch us work through the legislative process. This year, we're joined, not in the gallery but outside, Maggie Hansford, helped as a chaperone. And we have the students involved in the program this year, Stephanie Anis, Gianna Hirak, and Melody Hernandez. I'm excited that they had the chance to come down and watch the activities. And frankly, this week, proud to see us also pass historic legislation regarding women. In fact, as you'll see in just a moment, all of this year's class is women. And so, Mr. President, I'd ask you to provide the warm welcome of the Senate to the Greater Prince William Young Leaders Program.
I thank the senator. Would our leaders from the Greater Prince William Young Leaders Program in the gallery please rise if you are able? Thank you all so much for joining us here today, and thank you for your tremendous leadership in Prince William and throughout the Commonwealth of Virginia. We appreciate you. We echo the generous and eloquent words of the senator from Prince William, Senator McPike, and I look forward to having you here many more times in the future. I would ask everyone to please join me in extending the warmest welcome of the Senate to our young leaders from the Prince William County Young Leaders Program. Senator from Lynchburg, Senator Peak.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. I would ask you to please give the warm welcome of the Senate to the pastor who gave our wonderful invocation this morning, Ms. Teresa K. McRoberts, who's with Jubilee Ministries LLC in Richmond.
Thank the senator. Would the Reverend Teresa K. McRoberts please rise in the gallery? Reverend McRoberts, thank you so much for being here once again today. You've offered the prayer before, and today was particularly special and powerful prayer. So we are grateful to you for your moral leadership in Virginia and look forward to you coming here many more times. I would ask everyone to please join me in extending the warmest welcome of the Senate to our friend, the Reverend Teresa K. McRoberts. The senior senator from Richmond City, Senator McClellan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise for three introductions.
Thank the senator. You have the floor.
Thank you. First, joining us in the gallery are four Virginia chapters of the National Coalition of 100 Black Women. They represent Charlottesville, Northern Virginia, Richmond, and the Todd Water Champters. And their Structure for Action, the National Coalition of 100 Black Women, is committed to being a united voice for more than 20 million black women in the United States. As a leadership forum, it serves as a role model to help elevate the quality of life for young black women and other black women in transition. And they are here for their lobby day, and I ask you to give them a warm welcome.
I thank the senator. Would our... Okay, very good. We're gonna wait till the end, but we are going to recognize our leaders from the National Coalition of 100 Black Women with us here in the gallery. Please rise if you are able. Thank you all so much for joining us here in the Senate today. We are deeply grateful for your work and for your leadership and all that you do to help lift up the Commonwealth of Virginia and this country. We echo the generous and eloquent words of the senior senator from Richmond City, Senator McClellan. And you, of course, are welcome back here anytime and keep up your extraordinary work. I would ask everyone to please join me in extending the warmest welcome of the Senate to our wonderful leaders from the National Coalition of 100 Black Women. Senior senator from Richmond City, Senator McClellan.
Thank you, Mr. President. We are also joined today by Healthy Market Virginia Coalition, a group of patients, survivors, physicians, and families, working with 16 national and Virginia-based organizations to ensure that all Virginians have access to affordable and adequate health insurance when they need it. They have traveled from across the Commonwealth to meet with their legislators here in Richmond today and watch our work here on the floor and in committees, and I ask you to give them a warm welcome as well.
Thank the senator. Would our friends and leaders from Healthy Market Virginia please rise in the gallery if you are able? Thank you all so much for joining us here today. Thank you for traveling from around the Commonwealth of Virginia to fight for your fellow citizens to have affordable and high-quality health care. We are deeply appreciative of your involvement in the process to give voice to the Voice List, and we echo the generous and eloquent words of the senior senator from Richmond City, Senator McClellan. And you're welcome back here anytime. Enjoy your lobby day, and I would ask everyone to please join me in extending the warmest welcome of the Senate to our friends and leaders from Healthy Market, Virginia. Senior senator from Richmond City, Senator McClellan.
Thank you, Mr. President. And finally, it's my pleasure to introduce Jeanette Dean, who was the lead organizer for Nevada's ratification of the Equal Rights Amendment. She has been here since last Monday, showing her support, talking to legislators about the Equal Rights Amendment. She will be returning home to Minnesota tomorrow, but she has enjoyed her time and wanted me to express her thanks to everyone who has shown her such hospitality. We ask that we give her a warm welcome as well.
I thank the senator. Would Jeanette Dean please rise to the gallery if you are able? Jeanette, thank you so much for being here today and also for being here throughout the most part of the last week or two, and appreciate your wonderful and positive spirit and energy and your advocacy. It's been really infectious for a lot of people, and so we are grateful to you for all you've done around the country and wish you safe travels back to Minnesota. Thank you for your work in Nevada as well. So we echo the generous and eloquent words of the senior senator from Richmond City, Senator McClellan, and you're welcome back to the Commonwealth anytime. And I would ask everyone to please join me in extending the warmest welcome of the Senate to our friend, Jeanette Dean. The senator from Falkir, Senator Vogel.
Good morning, Mr. President. I rise for purposes of an introduction.
You have the floor, Senator. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, and it is my great honor to direct your attention to Julie Funkhauser and her family, who are in the gallery today. And Julie has undertaken a Herculean effort to educate people in our community and other communities around the Commonwealth about addiction and recovery. She is my constituent in the 27th District and has been an incredible advocate for trying to intervene in the lives of people who suffer from substance abuse. Her tireless work has led to a bill, the Senate Bill 903, that we'll actually vote on today. It's commonly known as Danny's Bill, and it is in memory of her husband, who passed away. And so I would just ask that everybody here please extend to Julie and her family and all of her supporters the very warm welcome of the Senate.
I thank the senator. Would our friend Julie Funkhauser and any family or guests please rise to the gallery if you are able? Julie and your family, thank you all so much for joining us here today. Thank you for your wonderful advocacy and tireless work on behalf of the memory of Danny, but also of so many other people who struggle with addiction and recovery. And I know that your senator, Senator Vogel, is deeply grateful for your work in turning your pain into purpose to serve other people. It's a beautiful thing, so we appreciate you. We are grateful to each one of you, and I would ask everyone to please join me in extending the warmest welcome of the Senate to our friends and leaders, Julie Funkhauser and Senator from Williamsburg, Senator Mason.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I rise for purposes of an introduction.
Thank the senator. You have the floor.
Mr. President, on behalf of the senator from Hampton and from James City County and really every senator in this chamber, I rise to welcome Newport News Shipbuilding, who's visiting with us today. You know, Mr. President, they employ 25,000 people in Virginia alone and have hired 11,000 in the last two years. As I'm checking these stats every year, it makes me make sure I'm right and say, wow, when they've had a hand in building 70% of the naval fleet and today have over $32 billion in contracts in play. So, Mr. President, I have the fortune in several things in my district that when you tour them, their employees will say, hey, you need to see this. This is pretty cool. I know we're super busy, but there's a... Their digital shipbuilding trailer is between here and the Pocahontas Building. If you get a couple seconds to poke your head in there, I guarantee you'll come out saying, wow, that's pretty cool. So, Mr. President, I would ask you and I'd like my colleagues to give Newport News Shipbuilding a warm welcome.
I thank the senator. Would our friends from the Newport News Shipbuilding please rise in the gallery if you are able? Thank you all so much for joining us here today. We are grateful always to see you in the Capitol and tremendously grateful for your work on behalf of Virginia, but also of this nation. You're an integral part of our country, and we are grateful for all the work that you do to keep us safe. And we echo the eloquent and very generous words of your senator, Senator Mason from Williamsburg. You're welcome back here anytime. Give our best to all of your wonderful employees, staff, and we're rooting for you every single day. So thank you very much, and I ask everybody to please join me in extending the warmest welcome of the Senate to our friends and leaders from Newport News Shipbuilding. The senior senator... Actually, I'm sorry, the junior senator from Richmond, Senator Morrissey.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I rise for the purpose of an introduction.
Thank the senator. You have the floor.
Mr. President, members of this body joining us in the gallery today are two distinguished citizens from Hopewell. We have Deborah Reason, the Commissioner of Revenue from Hopewell, and Lisa Schumate, the Deputy Commissioner of Revenue. Deborah is a veteran of the doings here on Capitol Square, but this is the first time that Lisa Schumate has visited the state Capitol. Mr. President, I would ask that the Senate give her a warm Virginia State Senate welcome.
I thank the senator. Would our friends, Commissioner Deborah Reason and Deputy Commissioner Lisa Schumate, please rise to the gallery if you are able? Deborah and Lisa, thank you all so much for all the work that you do for our Commonwealth and for your tremendous service. We are grateful to you and welcome back. And also, in your case, Lisa, a welcome to the Capitol, and we're very happy to have you here. You're welcome back here anytime. We echo the words of the junior senator from Richmond City, Senator Morrissey, and we appreciate you very much. I would ask everyone to please join me in extending the warmest welcome of the Senate to our leaders, Deborah Reason and Lisa Schumate. Senator from Northern Fairfax, Senator Howe.
Good afternoon, Mr. President.
Good afternoon, Senator.
Today, we have visiting us members of the Virginia State Organization of the Delta Kappa Gamma Society International. This society is an organization of women educators which promotes professional and personal growth of its members and excellence in education. Last year, they gave 117 awards, including scholarships and stipends to members and recruitment grants to young women preparing to be teachers. Over the last four years, they've given almost $300,000 to these women. Membership of the organization includes active and retired educators from preschool through the university level and those involved in education in non-school settings. I hope you'll give them the warm welcome of the Senate.
I thank the senator. Would our friends and leaders from Delta Kappa Gamma Society International please rise in the gallery if you are able? Thank you all so much for joining us here today in your Capitol and in the Senate. We are very appreciative of your tremendous work in educating our young people and the next generation, and we echo the eloquent generous words of the senator from Northern Fairfax, Senator Howe, who I know is very supportive of all that you do to make our Commonwealth better and to help us to rise and have a brighter future for each one of our families. So we are grateful to you. You're welcome back here anytime, and I would ask everyone to please join me in extending the warmest welcome of the Senate to our great leaders from the Delta Kappa Gamma Society And yes, you guys are on TV, so you can wave again. Senator from Mecklenburg, Senator Ruff.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise for introduction.
Thank the senator. You have the floor.
Joining us today in the gallery, we have a group from the Pennsylvania County Youth Commission. I ask you to give them a warm welcome.
Thank the senator. Would our leaders from the Pennsylvania County Youth Commission please rise to the gallery if you are able? Thank you all so much for being here today, and thanks for traveling from beautiful Pennsylvania County. We're always happy to see you here in the Capitol and wish you nothing but the best on your day here in the Senate. So I would ask everyone to please join me in extending the warmest welcome of the Senate to our young leaders from the Pennsylvania County Youth Commission. The senior senator from Chesterfield, Senator Chase.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise for the purposes of two introductions.
Thank the senator. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today in the gallery, we have the Community Coalitions of Virginia, which is a nonprofit organization who works to prevent and reduce substance use and related risk factors in Virginia. They focus on implementing strategies to improve the quality of life and accessibility of information for Virginia communities. They remain a sitting member of the Governor's Advisory Commission on opioids and addiction, and my good friend Regina Whitsett heads that group up.
I thank the senator. Would our friends from the Community Coalitions of Virginia in the gallery please rise if you are able? Thank you all. Very excited to have you here. Thank you all so much for joining us here today in the Senate and in the Capitol. We are grateful for your presence, but even more grateful for the work that you do every single day to help people who struggle with addiction and with other challenges in their lives and to help them break those chains so they can achieve their God-given talents. So we echo the generous and eloquent words of the senior senator from Chesterfield, Senator Chase. You're welcome back here anytime, and we wish you nothing but the best. I would ask everyone to please join me in extending the warmest welcome of the Senate to our friends from the Community Coalitions of Virginia. The junior senator from Chesterfield, Senator Hashmi.
Good morning, Mr. President.
Good morning, Senator.
It's my distinct privilege to introduce two important individuals in our gallery this morning.
Senator has the floor.
We have May Nivar, who's Chair of the Governor's Virginia Asian Advisory Board, and Cecilia Barbosa, who's Chair of the Governor's Virginia Latino Advisory Board. I congratulate both of them for their strong advocacy and work in supporting especially our English-as-a-second-language learners' abilities in our school systems. I ask that you extend a warm welcome of the Senate to these two individuals.
I thank the senator. Would our two friends, May Nivar and Cecilia Barbosa, please rise to the gallery if you are able? May and Cecilia, it is a wonderful pleasure to have you both here today with us in the Senate and the Capitol. Thank you for your tremendous work on behalf of the Commonwealth of Virginia, and thank you for your work with the governor promoting diversity and opportunity for all. It really is a powerful testimony to who the Commonwealth of Virginia can be, and so we echo the generous and eloquent words of the junior senator from Chesterfield, Senator Hashmi, and look forward to your wonderful work and success in the future. I would ask everyone to please join me in extending the warmest welcome of the Senate to our friends, May Nivar and Cecilia Barbosa. The senior senator from Fairfax, Senator Sasslaw.
I rise for the purposes of introduction.
Senator has the floor.
We're joined today in the gallery by two distinguished citizens of the City of Falls Church, Tom Clinton, who is the Commissioner of Revenue, and Jody Acosta, who is the Treasurer of the city. Commissioner Clinton has been Commissioner of Revenue in Falls Church since 2002 and was the first ever City of Falls Church employee to receive the Greater Falls Church Chamber of Commerce Pillar of the Community Award. Ms. Acosta has been the Treasurer of the City of Falls Church since 2014, and prior to that, she was the Deputy Treasurer for eight previous years. And she's also a longtime member and former president of the Citizens for a Better City. I would ask that you would extend the warm welcome of the Senate to our distinguished visitors.
I thank the senator. Would our friends, Tom Clinton and Jody Acosta, please rise in the gallery if you're able? Commissioner and Treasurer, thank you all so much for joining us here today. Thank you for your wonderful work in Falls Church and on behalf of so many residents who count on your tremendous leadership over the course of many years. And so you're always a welcome faces here in the Capitol. I know that Senator Sasslaw in particular loves seeing you here. So I want you to have a great day, and we wish you nothing but the best. And I would ask everyone to please join me in extending the warmest welcome of the Senate to our leaders, Tom Clinton, Commissioner of Revenue, and Jody Acosta, Treasurer for The senator from Portsmouth, Senator Lucas.
Good morning, and thank you, Mr. President.
Good morning, Senator.
I stand for the purposes of an introduction.
And the senator has the floor.
Joining us today in the gallery, and I don't know if all of them are present, but we have the Virginia Nurses Association, led by Dr. Vivian McDaniels. I would appreciate it if you would extend to them the very warmest welcome of the Senate.
I thank the senator. Would our friends and leaders from the Virginia Nurses Association please rise in the gallery if you are able? Thank you all so much for joining us here today. We're always grateful to see our wonderful nurses and deeply appreciative for the work that you do on behalf of so many people in the Commonwealth of Virginia. You are an essential part of our healthcare system, but also of our life as a Commonwealth. And so I have nurses in my family. We all have nurses that are part of our lives, and so we are appreciative of everything that you do. I would ask everyone to please join me in extending the warmest welcome of the Senate to our friends and leaders from the Virginia Nurses Association. Senator from Eastern Fairfax, Senator Surville.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise for an introduction.
Thank the senator. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Joining us in the gallery today, we have eight high school students from the 36th District who are joining us as part of the Puller Institute program, where I bring high school kids come down to watch us make some sausage. We have four kids from my alma mater, West Potomac High School, one from Mount Vernon High School, one from Hayfield Secondary School, another from Osborne Park High School in Prince William, and then one from Brookpoint High School in Stafford County. Their GPAs range from 3.6 to 4.2. They're all doing AP and IB classes. We have varsity athletes, Model UN participants, musicians, activists in Girls State, Young Dems, student government, youth NAACP debate. We also even have a former Senate page who has actually helped to pull shopping carts out of a creek, if you can believe that, who everybody might be familiar with him a couple of years ago. But, Mr. President, I would ask you to give them the warm welcome of the Senate.
I thank the senator. Would our young leaders from the Puller Institute please rise in the gallery if you are able? Thank you all so much for joining us here today. It's always wonderful to see you. It's a tremendous honor to be a member of the Puller Institute, and so you all should be very proud of what you have accomplished, and we are counting on you. You're wonderful young leaders, and you're doing tremendous work, not just in Prince William County and throughout Northern Virginia, but really throughout the entire Commonwealth. So I know that your senator from Eastern Fairfax, Senator Surville, like we all are, is very proud of you. So keep up the tremendous work. You have very bright futures. And I would ask everyone to please join me in extending the warmest welcome of the Senate to our leaders from the Puller Institute. The senior senator from Chesterfield, Senator Chase.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise for the purposes of an introduction.
Senator has the floor.
In the gallery today, we have some very dear friends who live in Chesterfield County. Their family is here today. Brian, Heather, and Jordan White, visiting us today from Chesterfield County.
I thank the senator. Would the White family please rise in the gallery if you are able? Thank you all so much for joining us here today from beautiful Chesterfield County. We are grateful to have you in the Senate, and I know that your senator in particular is always wonderful to see her constituents here. So thank you, guys, for all that you do. Enjoy your day at your Capitol, and I would ask everyone to please join me in extending the warmest welcome of the Senate to the White family. The junior senator from Richmond City, Senator Morrissey. The junior senator from Richmond City, Senator Morrissey.
Mr. President, I withdraw my request to speak.
At the end of the morning hour, I actually have the distinct honor and privilege of welcoming some special guests here with us in the Senate Gallery, and I had the honor and pleasure of meeting with them earlier today. They have traveled a long way from southwest Virginia, and so I would like to first ask them to stand. Our leaders from the United Mind Workers Association, if you would please stand in the gallery if you are able. Thank you all so much for all that you do, Treasurer Levi. Thank you for your tremendous leadership, and thank you for all that you do to not only benefit southwest Virginia, but the entire Commonwealth of Virginia. It's a beautiful community. You have your eyes focused on the future, and your wonderful families. I've had the pleasure of getting to know some of them, and so we are grateful to you. Look forward to nothing but wonderful things, and I loved being with you last year during the 30th anniversary of a very significant moment in Pittston. So keep up the fight, and I would ask everyone to please join me to send the warmest welcome of the Senate to our friends and leaders from the United Mind Workers of America. Do any other senators wish to be recognized for purposes of an introduction? Is there any other business to come in the morning hour? Seeing none, the clerk will call the calendar.
Senate calendar for Tuesday, January 28, 2020. Uncontested calendar, Senate Bills on Third Reading.
Senior senator from Fairfax, Senator Sasslaw.
Mr. President, I move that Senate Bills on Third Reading on the uncontested calendar, its pages 1 through 12, Senate Bill 235 through 1008 be placed on their final passage in a block. Any senator is eyeing to move a bill from the block, please do so after the clerk has read the number of the bill.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the Senate Bills on the uncontested calendar, Third Reading, pages 1 through 12, Senate Bill 235 through Senate Bill 1008 be placed upon their final passage in the block? With the understanding that any senator desiring a bill be removed from the block will do so after the clerk has read the number of the bill. All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion is agreed to. The bills are before us in the block. Clerk, read the number of the bills.
Senate Bill 235, we have two floor amendments.
Senator from Southern Fairfax, Senator Barker.
Mr. President, I move that that bill come out of the block.
Without objection, Senate Bill 235 will be removed from the block.
Senate Bill 120, Senate Bill 122, Senate Bill 173, Senate Bill 207, Senate Bill 221, Senate Bill 301, Senate Bill 317, Senate Bill 333, Senate Bill 365, Senate Bill 380, Senate Bill 386, Senate Bill 445, Senate Bill 519, Senate Bill 538, Senate Bill 650, Senate Bill 653, Senate Bill 672, Senate Bill 701, Senate Bill 703, Senate Bill 757, Senate Bill 877, Senate Bill 881, Senate Bill 903, Senate Bill 913, Senate Bill 980, Senate Bill 981, Senate Bill 1008.
Question is, shall the bills in the block pass? That is, all bills except for Senate Bill 235. All in favor of the passage of the bills will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, 40, no, 0.
Ayes, 40, no, 0. The bills in the block pass. Senator from Southern Fairfax, Senator Barker.
Mr. President, I take up the bill that was pulled out of the block, Senate Bill 235.
Thank the Senator. So we're returning to Page 1, Senate Bill 235.
Mr. President, I move that we reconsider the vote by which we acted to engross in advance to its third reading, this bill.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the vote by which the bill was engrossed in advance to its third reading be reconsidered? All in favor of the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, 40, no, 0.
Ayes, 40, no, 0. The motion is agreed to. Senator from Southern Fairfax, Senator Barker.
Mr. President, I move that we waive the reading of the floor amendments.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the reading of the floor amendments be waived? All in favor of waiving the reading will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the reading of the floor amendments is waived. Senator from Southern Fairfax, Senator Barker.
Mr. President, I move that we agree to the floor amendments in a block, and speaking to that motion.
Senator has the floor.
I want to thank specifically the Senator from Bath County, Senator Deeds, who caught some mistakes in the substitute version of this bill. These two sentences, which are proposed to be restricken here, were not in the original bill and were added when the substitute was imposed and would have basically contradicted the intent and purpose of the bill. So I ask that the body agree to those two amendments.
Thank the Senator. Do any other senators wish to be heard regarding the floor amendments offered by Senator from Southern Fairfax, Senator Barker? Seeing none, the question is, shall the Senator agree to the floor amendments? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the floor amendments are agreed to. Senator from Southern Fairfax, Senator Barker.
Mr. President, I now move that we engross in advance to the third reading.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the bill is engrossed in advance to its third reading. Senator from Southern Fairfax, Senator Barker.
Mr. President, now move that we suspend the rules and dispense with the third constitutional reading.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the rules be suspended and the third constitutional reading be dispensed with? All in favor of the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, 40, no, 0.
Ayes, 40, no, 0. The rules are suspended and the third constitutional reading is dispensed with. Senator from Southern Fairfax, Senator Barker.
Mr. President, I move that the bill now pass, and speaking briefly to that.
Senator has the floor.
Certainly, Mr. President. This is the bill that would establish association health plans as an option for people who have common employment, a common, basically a common job that they do, but do not have full-time employment. And Realtors are an example of that, and I've worked closely with the Realtors to develop this bill. It builds on a bill that the senior senator, the senior from Henrico, worked on last year, and we got through, and hopefully it would be the pleasure of the body to do that again. Thank you.
Thank the Senator. Do any other senators wish to be heard regarding Senate Bill 235? Seeing none, the question is, shall Senate Bill 235 pass? All in favor of the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, 40, no, 0.
Ayes, 40, no, 0. Senate Bill 235 passes.
Regular calendar, Senate Bills on Third Reading, Senate Bill 391, a bill relating to adult abuse, financial exploitation, required report by financial institution.
Senator from Prince William County, Senator McPike.
Mr. President, I move to pass the bill by for the day.
Without objection, Senate Bill 391 will go by for the day.
Senate Bill 126, a bill relating to method of nominating party candidates incumbent selection.
Senator from Roanoke County, Senator Suterline.
Thank you, Mr. President. I moved that the Senate, pass Senate Bill 126 by for the day.
Without objection, Senate Bill 126 will go by for the day.
Senate Bill 316, a bill relating to elections, date of June, primary election.
The junior senator from Virginia Beach, Senator Kiggins.
Mr. President, I move that Senate Bill 316 pass.
Senator want to speak to the bill?
Sorry, yes, I'd like to speak to the bill, Mr. President.
Senator has the floor.
So this idea of moving the date of the primary election was proposed to me by the Department of Elections. We, mostly for school safety issues, there's a wide variety of reasons, but now that we have no excuse absentee ballot voting in place, moving that date back from the second week to the third week will just eliminate a lot of issues with the children still being in school and parents coming in and out of the school, and that last week of school real busy with field days and parent-teacher conferences. And when I rose at committee to speak to the bill, we had probably seven or eight people from just teachers and education associations that were also supportive of this bill, just mostly for school safety issues. So because of that, I think it would be just a great idea for the kids' sake, the schools' sake, teachers' sake. I know during our election, our primary election, it was difficult. We frequently were accosting parents who were there for parent-teacher conferences about vote, 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 and they weren't there to vote. So it, there was a lot of confusion that ensued as well. So I, again, moved to pass this bill.
Thank the Senator. For what purpose, the senator from Eastern Fairfax, Senator Surville, rise.
Speaking to the bill.
Senator has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ladies and gentlemen, we discussed this last year. It was a bad idea last year, it's a bad idea this year. And we already have, what, 3% turnout in our primaries? Maybe five, okay, five, if we're lucky. Maybe 10 on a good day. And if you look at the current electorate who votes in a primary, I just pulled the data for some of the areas that I represent. The Democratic electorate in the area I represent, 66% of the voters are over age 55 who participate, even though they only represent probably about 30% of the voters. The Republican primary, it's even worse. 70% of the voters that participate are over the age of 55. And being of child-rearing age, I can tell you that virtually every family I know, not virtually everyone, but a lot of families I know, as soon as school's out, even right before school's out, the last week, they don't really do a lot anyway, people are out of town as fast as they can get. And if you, if we want to think of a way to reduce turnout in these primaries, make it harder and harder for people with children to participate, move this primary date till after school's out. All you're going to do is make the electorate older and less representative of the people who we represent. From my perspective, I don't understand what the security concerns are about. We currently have the presidential election in November, we have the presidential primary in March. This is the lowest turnout of all the primaries, and if turnouts are low, I'm not clear what the security issues are. I've never even, I don't even remember ever hearing a problem with somebody getting into a school and causing a problem. From my perspective, you know, this might be more convenient for the people who run the elections, but we're not supposed to make it convenient for them, it's supposed to be convenient for the voters. And I don't think just because we've removed the excuses, that's going to cause a lot of people to remember that we have a primary coming up when the flurry of activity comes pushing people to vote two or three or four days before the election. I think people are still not going to participate. It's just going to be a lot worse than it has been. I think we need to leave the date right where it is, and we need to kill this bill on the floor, just like we did 12 months ago.
For what purpose, the senator from Northern Chesapeake, Senator Spruill, rise.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Speaking to the bill.
Senator has the floor.
Mr. Speaker and members, I rise to support the bill. In Virginia, my Virginia, where we're from, the May-June election is really important. When other parts, it may not be, but we're having a problem that the school buses are coming up, people trying to vote at 7 o'clock in the morning, and all these school buses coming up. You're going inside, where we use Chesapeake and North Carolina to the schools. So if you're outside at the polling place, you're passing out literature or what have you, you want to use the restroom, you're supposed to put the literature down and go inside. When you go inside, you came because you got to walk down the hall past the classroom, and that's a problem. So it is a big problem in my neck of the woods, so I'm hoping that we will support this bill. Thank you.
Thank the Senator. For what purpose, the senator from Henrico, Senator Dunavitt, rise.
Thank you, Mr. President. Speak to the bill.
Senator has the floor.
I just want to point out that we've already passed in this body no-excuse absentee ballot voting, and we have to have a little bit of sanity about consistency in how we're thinking about elections. We changed a holiday so that we would make sure that schools didn't, were not open on that holiday. This is a good policy, to not have our kids in schools during an election day. Anybody that's been at a primary knows that it's chaos, and parents do get assaulted with a question if you will vote for X candidate. So this may be inconvenient for getting turnout, but we can't hold people hostage by dates and when school gets out about when they vote, and I think we've solved that with no-excuse absentee ballot. Thank you, Mr. President. I support the bill.
Thank the Senator. For what purpose, the senator from James City County, Senator Normant, rise.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to speak very briefly in support of the bill.
Senator has the floor.
Mr. President, I don't serve on the Privileges and Elections Committee, but as I look at it, it has a very diverse constitution, and some of these same arguments were discussed before committee. And interestingly enough, the vote coming out of the committee was 14 to 1, and I respect anyone's right to dissent, but sometimes my practicality creates issues for me. I rise in support of the bill.
Thank the Senator. For what purpose, the senator from Western Fairfax, Senator Marsden, rise.
Thank you, Mr. President. Speak to the bill.
Senator has the floor.
It is not a bad idea to have kids in school seeing their parents and neighbors going to vote in a primary and teachers having to explain to them what's going on. It's the early education to the voting process. I'm on the Civic Education Commission. I think it's a good thing, so reluctantly, I would ask that you vote against the bill.
Thank the Senator. For what purpose, the senator from Northwestern Fairfax, Senator Boyceau, rise.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise in support of the bill.
Senator has the floor.
As I believe the only person in this body who has had four races in the past calendar year, I would like to say that three of them were either primaries or special elections. And I can attest to you, my friend from Chesapeake just mentioned, that it is confusing for families and for voters to try to figure out where the polling place is in the building. The parking is challenged, the buses are coming, the people can't get in to go and use the restroom if they need. I strongly support this bill, having just lived through four elections in the past year, three of them being special elections or primaries. Thank you.
Thank the Senator. Do any other senators wish to be heard regarding Senate Bill 316? For what purpose, the junior senator from Virginia Beach, Senator Kiggins, rise.
Mr. President, I rise to speak to the bill.
Senator has the floor.
One last time. I agree with some of the comments about the turnout for the primary election. That's really, I feel like, a separate issue. If you want to address why people don't turn out for a primary, there's a lot of reasons, and I think there's a lot of room for improvement, and that's something we can definitely work on in the future. You know, I'm a parent of four children, and we need a break after school. We don't get on the bus last day of school and leave, and the chaos that is happening, that last week of school wrapping up with projects and field days and class parties and whatnot, it's very hard to accommodate that and get to any other events, including voting. So I would, I would move that making it the third week of June just allows for more free time, people to get to the polls again with no-excuse absentee ballot or voting. I think that it's definitely conducive to supporting this bill. So I request, respectfully request, that you vote in favor.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall Senate Bill 316 pass? All in favor of the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, 24, no, 16.
Ayes, 24, no, 16. Senate Bill 316 passes.
Senate Bill 795, a bill relating to offshore oil and gas drilling policy.
Senator from Akamak, Senator Lewis.
Mr. President, I'd request that bill go by for the day, please.
Without objection, Senate Bill 795 will go by for the day.
Senate Bill 98, a bill relating to public elementary and secondary school teachers' probationary term of service performance evaluation.
Senator from Hampton, Senator Locke.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the bill pass, and what Senate Bill 98 does is it removes language that was added to the code in 2013. That language allows school divisions to extend teacher probationary periods to five years. The goal of this language was to ensure that teachers with up to five years of experience can be fired without due process. A probationary period for process. A probationary period for teachers had for decades prior to this change, been three years. This simply puts back the probationary period to three years. Again, I move that the bill pass.
Thank the senator. Do any other senators wish to be heard regarding Senate Bill 98? Seeing none, the question is, shall Senate Bill 98 pass? All in favor of the motion will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes 27, noes 13.
Ayes 27, noes 13. Senate Bill 98 passes.
Senate Bill 167, a bill relating to dismissal of teachers' grounds of incompetency.
Senator from Arlington, Senator Favola.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the bill pass in speaking to the motion.
Senator has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. What this bill does is it merely removes the definition of incompetency from the statute. It does not change in any way the reasons why a teacher may be fired. School systems still have latitude and flexibility to pass policies dealing with low-performing teachers. The only thing this does is remove the definition of incompetency in the statute. So with that, Mr. President, I ask that the bill pass.
Thank the senator. Do any other senators wish to be heard regarding Senate Bill 167? Seeing none, the question is, shall Senate Bill 167 pass? All in favor of the motion will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes 23, noes 17.
Ayes 23, noes 17. Senate Bill 167 passes.
Senate Bill 341, a bill relating to construction management and design build contracting used by local public bodies.
Senator from Hampton, Senator Locke.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that Senate Bill 341 pass. This bill relates to construction management and design build contracting. It, with recent changes by the Secretary of Administration, regulations include raising the threshold for construction management used from $10 million to $26 million, as well as requiring that smaller companies be shortlisted. The bill does only one thing. It deletes the threshold amount for local public bodies. The intent is that all local bodies will have to comply with the Secretary of Administration at $26 million. Again, I move that the bill pass.
Thank the senator. For what purpose is Senator from Prince Williams, Senator McPike Rice?
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to speak against the measure.
Senator has the floor.
I appreciate the patrons caring. I see it's by request. But there are some, I think, important provisions to think about of what this does to local government. So some of you around for the early implementation of design build and CM@Risk measures, probably in the 2004 to 2006 timeframe. This is an important vehicle. By deleting this definition, you're actually eliminating a host of projects that locality spend within that threshold. And over my 20 years of experience, there is a sweet spot in terms of construction. Essentially, this eliminates CM@Risk and design build as a construction methodology. You know, there are actually, the thousand companies within AGC Design Build don't want the change. And so there's a small host of folks that would like to see this change. I would suggest that the body pump the brakes on this. We're not fixing something that's broke. We're actually limiting your local government's ability to use contract methodology that's already on the books. And I'd encourage the body to simply vote no on this. It's simply not broken. Thank you.
Thank the senator. Do any senators other than the patron wish to be heard on Senate Bill 341? Seeing none, Senator from Hampton, Senator Locke.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to point out that all, everyone who was involved with this worked out all issues with regard to the bill, and no one from local government came to speak out against the bill. Again, I move that the bill be...
Thank the senator. The question is, shall Senate Bill 341 pass? All in favor of the motion will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes 36, noes 4.
Ayes 36, noes 4. Senate Bill 341 passes.
Senate Bill 346, a bill relating to contractors' on-site superintendent's boiler and pressure vessel operator license.
Senator from Loudoun, Senator Bell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move passage to the bill and speaking to the motion.
Senator has the floor.
Mr. President, this bill would simply add a safety measure, basically a certification that those who operate and maintain pressure vessels, boilers, are qualified to do so. Currently, today, unfortunately, we've had accidents and incidents where people are not qualified to operate these potentially explosive devices, and we've had mishaps accordingly. Ask that the bill pass.
Thank the senator. Do any other senators wish to be heard regarding Senate Bill 346? Seeing none, the question is, shall Senate Bill 346 pass? All in favor of the motion will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes 26, noes 13.
Ayes 26, noes 13. Senate Bill 346 passes.
Senate Bill 377, a bill relating to teacher grievance procedures, hearing, three-member fact-finding panel.
Senator from Loudoun, Senator Bell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move passage to the bill and speaking to the motion.
Senator has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill simply restores the language that was eliminated in 2013, that adds a three-person panel that is a fair panel for teachers. We currently have a problem with teacher retention, and I believe this will ensure if there is allegation of misconduct, that the teacher has a fair hearing. Current procedures are the school board would pick all, either do the hearing themselves or pick all members. This would follow the same procedures we use with law enforcement or firefighters, where the school board picks one hearing member, the teacher picks one, and then the two together pick the third. I move passage to the bill.
Thank the senator. Do any other senators wish to be heard regarding Senate Bill 377? Seeing none, the question is, shall Senate Bill 377 pass? All in favor of the motion will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes 23, noes 17.
Ayes 23, noes 17. Senate Bill 377 passes.
Senate Bill 479, a bill relating to protective orders, possession of firearms, surrender or transfer of firearms penalty.
Senator from Northern Fairfax, Senator Howe.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill pass and speaking to it.
Thank the senator. You have the floor.
About three years ago, a compromise was made on gun safety bills. Three bills were actually allowed to pass. And I remember the Senator from Spotsylvania, Senator Reeves, working very, very hard on all three of those bills. One of those bills was my bill that dealt with protective orders, with permanent protective orders for family and intimate violence offenses. To remind you, a permanent protective order has to have gone through a judge, and they have to have gone through two other steps of other kinds of protective orders. That bill was, as I said, only for family and intimate partner protective orders. And there was last-minute work on trying to figure out how people would give up their firearms. This bill sort of cleans up how to get rid of the firearm. It's been worked out through a work group, the various steps. And it also expands which permanent protective orders are covered. And in effect, it's all permanent protective orders. So that would include stalking or a protective order dealing with someone who is not a relative or an intimate partner, perhaps your next-door neighbor, that kind of protective order. And so I hope it will be the pleasure to pass this. I think it's just kind of cleaning up and correcting perhaps what we did three years ago.
Thank the senator. Do any other senators wish to be heard regarding Senate Bill 479? For what purpose is the senior senator from Chesterfield, Senator Chase Rice?
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to speak against Senate Bill 479.
Senator has the floor.
Mr. President, I find this bill redundant. We already have temporary detaining orders. And quite honestly, I'm not sure that I understand why we would need this bill. So for that reason, I'm against this bill. Thank you.
Thank the senator. For what purpose? Okay, does anybody else wish to be heard regarding Senate Bill 479? For what purpose, Senator from Spotsylvania, Senator Reeves Rice?
Thank you, Mr. President. Will the patron of the bill rise for a question?
Will the patron yield for a question?
Yes, I do.
Senator Yields, you have the floor.
Mr. President, Senator, this bill deals with a permanent protective order. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And, Mr. President, I would ask the senator a follow-on question. Would that mean...
Senator Yields, you have the floor.
Would that mean it'd be a court order in which an individual was potentially probably found committing an act of violence against a loved one to the level that a permanent protective order would be two years or more?
Senator has the floor.
Mr. President, I would answer yes.
Further questions?
Mr. President, I would say, Mr. President, no further questions, but commenting on the bill.
Senator has the floor.
Mr. President, I would just tell everybody, this was a lot of hard work. I think the senator is heading in the right direction with this. I'm going to be voting for the bill because as someone who's had to respond to these and was part of the original bill, I think this is a good positive step in the right direction to make sure that those who commit acts of violence against others to the state that they've had to go through a due process with counsel don't need to have access to those firearms. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank the senator. For what purpose is Senator from Rockingham, Senator Obenshein Rice?
Mr. President, I rise for a question. If the gentle lady from Fairfax would yield...
Senator Yields?
I'll yield.
Thank the senator. You have the floor.
Mr. President, my question relates to the language of the bill. My understanding is that this bill actually requires the affirmative surrender of firearms. But does it also require a, like a form to be filled out, some writing to be submitted by the subject of the protective order?
Senator has the floor.
Mr. President, I would answer that there will be forms given to the person who needs to give up the firearm with instructions as to where they could give them up and different ways they could give them up. I'm not sure I'm answering your question.
Mr. President, further question.
Further question.
Am I correct in my understanding that the bill makes it a crime not to surrender the firearms?
Senator has the floor.
I would answer the gentleman, yes.
Further question?
Mr. President, further question. I would ask whether this also makes it a crime for the subject of the protective order to fail to file paperwork as well?
Senator has the floor.
I would answer, I believe so.
Further question?
I thank the gentle lady.
Thank the senator. For what purpose is Senator from King George, Senator Stewart Rice?
Mr. President, would the gentle lady yield for a question?
Will the Senator yield?
Yes, Mr. President. I yield.
Senator Yields, thank you. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. The gentle lady knows I've voted for this bill year and year and year and year, every time she's brought the version of this. And I apologize for not being in the Courts of Justice Committee, but it's, I was reading it too. I just want to confirm something. As I understand it, there must be a certification made, and the gentle lady indicated there would be a form from the court. But I guess my question would be, is there an obligation, because I don't read it as such in the bill, of the clerk to give this form to the individual, explain to them that they must hand over all their firearms, and then they must sign this statement? Who, I guess my question is, whose obligation is it? Because it becomes a Class I misdemeanor, which is 12 months in jail and a $2,500 fine. So it is, could they negligently not sign it? Or is it a willful refusal? I'm not sure how that practically would work.
Senator has the floor.
Mr. President, my assumption, and I believe the assumption in the bill, is that the judge would inform the person of the requirements.
Will Senator Yields to the Senator from Fairfax City? Senator Yields, floor?
Yes.
Will you yield? You have the floor now.
I will yield.
Senator Yields, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ladies and gentlemen, in the Senate, I look at the bill on line 36. It talks about the court issuing an order to the person subject to that protective order. And then it gives a process whereby they will have 24 hours after being served with a protective order to surrender such firearms. And then it talks about, if you go down to line 44, a form provided by the Office of the Executive Secretary of the Supreme Court. So again, this is fully within the ambit of the judicial system.
Thank the senator. Do any other senators wish to be heard? Senator from King George, Senator Stewart.
Thank you, Mr. President. Speaking to the bill.
Senator has the floor.
Mr. President, I've voted for this version of this bill every year since the gentle lady from Fairfax has brought it, and I believe in this. But this one gives me a little bit of concern because it seems to me that the patron may want a willful refusal, and maybe I'm mistaking this. It may be, I think we're looking to punish somebody for willfully refusing to do this, but yet this could actually happen just as a clerical error from the court. And I'm concerned about that.
Thank the senator. Do any other senators wish to be heard? For what purpose is Senator from Fairfax City, Senator Peterson Rice?
Ladies and gentlemen, the Senate, just speaking to the bill.
Senator has the floor.
And I had not planned on speaking, and I know that, I think for the most part, I think we've probably got nowhere we're going to stand on this. I just want to remind people, and Senator Reeves was exactly correct. I believe it was four years ago, we reached a compromise on concealed carry, that we were going to recognize out-of-state licenses on concealed carry, which is important to the Second Amendment community. But we also said to the public safety community, we are going to take people that are under these protective orders, and we're going to take away their firearm rights. And that was the deal we struck. It was a good deal. I supported it. A lot of us did. I think we pretty much all did. And I think this is in keeping with the spirit of that deal. This is not anything radical. And so I hope we support this common sense compromise. Thank you.
Thank the senator. Do any other senators wish to be heard regarding Senate Bill 479? Seeing none, the question is, shall Senate Bill 479 pass? All in favor of the motion will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes 23, noes 17.
Ayes 23, noes 17. Senate Bill 479 passes.
Senate Bill 883, with apologies to the Senator from Hampton, the title in your calendar is incorrect. We promise there won't be a third one. A bill relating to city, to environmental justice council.
Senator from Hampton, Senator Locke.
Thank you. I move that Senate Bill 883 pass. And what 883 does, it establishes the Virginia Council on Environmental Justice. And what it does is it codifies an advisory body consistent of 24 members, which will advise the governor and provide recommendations that maintain a foundation of environmental justice principles intended to protect vulnerable communities from disproportionate impacts of pollution and displacement. I move that the bill pass.
Thank the senator. Do any other senators wish to be heard regarding Senate Bill 883? Seeing none, the question is, shall Senate Bill 883 pass? All in favor of the motion will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes 27, noes 12.
Ayes 27, noes 12. Senate Bill 883 passes.
Uncontested calendar, Senate bills on second reading.
Mr. President. For Senator from Augusta, Senator Hanger Rice?
Mr. President, before we leave that section on page 14, Senate Bill 98, having voted on the prevailing side by which that bill passed, I would ask that we reconsider that vote, Senate Bill 98.
On page 14. Thank the senator. The question is, shall the vote by which Senate Bill 98 pass be reconsidered? All in favor of the motion will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes 40, noes 0.
Ayes 40, noes 0. The motion is agreed to. Senator from Hampton, Senator Locke.
Mr. President, having previously explained Senate Bill 98, again, I move that the bill pass.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall Senate Bill 98 pass? All in favor of the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the Senators ready to vote? Have all the Senators voted? Do any Senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, 25; noes, 15.
Ayes, 25; noes, 15. Senate Bill 98 passes.
Regular calendar, Senate bills, sorry, uncontested calendar, Senate bills on second reading.
Senior Senator from Fairfax, Senator Sasslaw.
Mr. President, I move that all Senate bills on second reading on the uncontested calendar, pages 16 through 20, that Senate Bills 177 through 1089 be advanced to their engrossment and third reading in a block after the adoption of any amendments thereto. Any Senator desiring to move a bill from the block, please do so after the clerk has read the number of the bill.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall all Senate bills on second reading on the uncontested calendar on pages 16 through 20, Senate Bill 177 through Senate Bill 1089, be engrossed in advance to their third reading in the block after the adoption of any amendments thereto, and that any Senator desiring a bill be removed from the block will do so after the clerk has read the number of the bill. All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The motion is agreed to. The clerk will read the number of the bills.
Senate Bill 177, reported from the Committee on Rules. Senate Bill 256, reported from the Committee on Rules. Senate Bill 289, reported from the Committee on Transportation with amendment...
Senator from Bath, Senator Deeds.
Mr. President, I move adoption of the amendment, please.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the committee amendment be adopted? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee amendment is adopted.
Senate Bill 328, reported from the Committee on Transportation. Senate Bill 414, reported from the Committee on Rehabilitation and Social Services. Senate Bill 496, reported from the Committee on Rehabilitation and Social Services with a substitute.
Senator from Roanoke City, Senator Edwards.
Mr. President, I move that the Senate adopt the committee substitute.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the committee substitute be adopted? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee substitute is adopted.
Senate Bill 497, reported from the Committee on Rehabilitation and Social Services. Senate Bill 498, reported from the Committee on Rehabilitation and Social Services with a substitute.
Senator from Roanoke City, Senator Edwards.
Mr. President, I move that the committee substitute be adopted.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the committee substitute be adopted? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee substitute is adopted.
Senate Bill 656, reported for the Committee on Rehabilitation and Social Services with a substitute.
Senator from Northwestern Fairfax, Senator Boysko.
Mr. President, I move that the committee substitute be agreed to.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee substitute is agreed to.
Senate Bill 675, reported for the Committee on Rehabilitation and Social Services. Senate Bill 689, reported for the Committee on Rehabilitation and Social Services with a substitute.
Senator from Falkir, Senator Vogel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the substitute be agreed to.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee substitute is agreed to.
Senate Bill 871, reported from the Committee on Transportation. Senate Bill 1023, reported for the Committee on Rehabilitation and Social Services with a substitute.
Senator from Lynchburg, Senator Pete.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the substitute be agreed to.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee substitute is agreed to.
Senate Bill 1089, reported for the Committee on Rehabilitation and Social Services with amendments.
The junior Senator from Richmond City, Senator Morrissey.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I move that the committee amendments be adopted.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the committee amendments be adopted? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee amendments are adopted. Question is, shall the Senate bills be engrossed in advance to their third reading? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The bills are engrossed in advance to their third reading.
Regular calendar, Senate bills on second reading. Senate Bill 478, a bill relating to Clinch State Scenic River, Guest State Scenic River, reported for the Committee on Agriculture, Conservation, and Natural Resources with a substitute, and there is a floor substitute.
Senator from Russell, Senator Chafin.
Mr. President, speaking to the committee substitute with the recommendation that we reject the committee substitute, I move the substitute pass.
Thank the Senator. With the recommendation that it be rejected, the question is, shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee substitute is not agreed to. Senator from Russell, Senator Chafin.
Yes, Mr. President. I now move that we waive the reading of the floor amendment.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the reading of the floor amendment be waived? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The reading of the floor amendment is waived. Senator from Russell, Senator Chafin.
I move passage of the floor amendment.
Senator want to speak to it?
Speaking to that, yes.
Senator has the floor.
So this bill started out with three counties in it. Then I amended two of the counties out, and now I've added an amendment bringing one back. And it would appear, it would appear, yes, it would appear that the Clinch River that flows through Russell County is just as beautiful and scenic as the Clinch River that flows through Tassel County. So I would ask that we allow the amendment so that the good people of those two counties can be recognized for the scenic beauty and quality of their, the Clinch River.
Thank the Senator. Question is, shall the floor substitute be adopted? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The floor substitute is adopted. Senator from Russell, Senator Chafin.
Mr. President, I now move that the bill be engrossed and passed to its third reading.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The bill is engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Senate Bill 772, a bill relating to transportation of bait fish for sale penalty, reported for the Committee on Agriculture, Conservation, and Natural Resources with an amendment, and there is a floor substitute.
Senator from Franklin County, Senator Stanley.
Thank, Mr. President. With regard to Senate Bill 772, with the recommendation that we reject the committee amendment, I now move that the committee amendment be adopted.
Thank the Senator. With the recommendation that it be rejected, the question is, shall the committee amendment be adopted? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee amendment is rejected. Senator from Franklin County, Senator Stanley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I now move that with regard to Senate Bill 772, that we waive the reading of the floor substitute.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the reading of the floor substitute be waived? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The reading of the floor substitute is waived. Senator from Franklin County, Senator Stanley.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I now move the floor substitute, and trying to speak to that motion.
Senator has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. You may have, those who have seen this in the committees understand that what we have right now is going on is people from out of state are coming into our freshwater areas, lakes, and harvesting our bait fish and taking them back and selling them in other states, and what's causing is depletion of our bait fish in these freshwater. And they're doing this because they don't have any bait fish in there, because it depleted all theirs in North Carolina and South Carolina. So what this seeks to do is basically prohibit that sale of our, of our natural resource in other states. Specifically, what this does is it drills down to make sure that we specifically identify which kind of shad would be prohibited from being harvested and then taken across state lines for sale. And so that includes the shad there on lines 23 to 25, and that's basically what it does. And it really defines that what we're trying to do is not affect anything on the eastern shore, but just on inland waters, freshwater. And that's the, and I renew my motion that the floor substitute be agreed to. Now that I saw Senator Mason running over here like he was going to attack me for a second. It doesn't have anything to do with what you got over there.
Thank the Senator. For what purpose Senator from King George, Senator Stewart, rise.
Gentleman, yield for a question?
Will Senator yield?
No.
Senator will not yield.
Yes, I'll yield.
Senator Yields, you have the floor.
Mr. President, what is an alley weave?
Senator has the floor.
An alley weave is actually an old guy used to sell shad in Smith Mountain Lake, and that's what he called it. And so even though it's ale wife, we used to call him alley weaves, because that's what he called them. And if you said to him, Bob, you got any ale wife? He'd go, I ain't got that, but I got some alley weave. So that's what an alley weave is.
Further question? Will Senator yield for further question?
Mr. President, would this substitute affect the sale of canned herring?
Senator has the floor.
Mr. President, I answered. I didn't know they still put herring in a can. So, but I don't think it will. Is that enough? I now renew my motion that the floor substitute be agreed to.
Not so fast. For what purposes the junior Senator from Richmond City, Senator Morrissey, rise.
Mr. President, would the patron of the bill yield for a question?
Will Senator yield?
Yes.
Senator Yields, you have the floor.
While it is very tempting to bait the patron with questions, I actually have a serious one.
Senator has the floor.
The people that are coming from Virginia's sister states and harvesting that, those bait fish, are they paying for it, or are they harvesting it themselves without paying for it?
Senator has the floor.
Mr. Chairman, I, Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, I answered the gentleman by saying no. What they're doing is they're, they're creating these bait fish tanks, which of course are round so that the bait fish don't get caught in the corners, putting them on large haulers. And then what they do is they come across this way because they don't have enough bait fish in these areas, and they harvest our naturally occurring bait fish in, you know, Kerr Reservoir, in Clater Lake, in Smith Mountain Lake, by casting a net and grabbing thousands of them. And then what they do is they turn around after getting them for free and are selling them for $1, $3, $5, and even $10 per bait fish. I thank the gentleman.
Thank the Senator. Do any other Senators wish to be heard regarding the floor substitute? Seeing none, question is, shall the floor substitute be adopted? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The floor substitute is adopted. Senator from Franklin County, Senator Stanley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I now move that Senate Bill 772 be engrossed in advance to its third constitutional reading.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The bill is engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Senate Bill 263, a bill relating to concealed handgun permits demonstration of competence, reported from the Committee on the Judiciary. There is a floor amendment.
Senator from Loudoun, Senator Bell. Senator from Bath, Senator Deeds.
Mr. President, I move that the reading of the floor amendment be waived.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the reading of the floor amendment be waived? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The reading of the floor amendment is waived. Senator from Bath, Senator Deeds.
Mr. President, members of the Senate, you'll notice that I voted no on this bill in committee. One of the reasons I voted no was that there was ample evidence before the committee that we don't have enough trainers for concealed carry permit holders at this time. The purpose of this floor amendment is to put off the effective date of this legislation by six months to give us time to train more trainers. I hope that you will adopt the amendment.
Thank the Senator. For what purpose Senator from Loudoun, Senator Bell, rise.
Thank you, Mr. President. Speaking to the floor amendment.
Senator has the floor.
Mr. President, I thank the Senator from Bath, and I support this amendment. I think this time is reasonable, and it will allow us to be in a better posture, provide adequate training.
Thank the Senator. Question is, shall the floor amendment be adopted? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The floor amendment is adopted. Senator from Loudoun, Senator Bell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The bill is engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Senate Bill 733, a bill relating to provision, provision of abortion informed consent regulations, reported from the Committee on Education and Health with a substitute, and there is a floor amendment and a floor substitute.
The senior Senator from Richmond City, Senator McClellan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the committee substitute be adopted.
Thank the Senator. The question is...
Mr. President.
For what purpose Senator from Bedford, Senator Newman, rise.
Mr. President, speak to the motion.
Senator has the floor.
Mr. President, under our rules, and I respect them deeply, if you have a committee substitute, then there's not an opportunity for a floor substitute. In talking to the clerk, there is an opportunity this time to talk about what might be available to you if we reject the committee amendment, and I'd like to speak to that issue. Mr. President, there is very few issues that are probably more controversial than the subject matter of Senate Bill 733. During the committee discussions, the bill is really an omnibus bill, and I'll allow the gentle lady, the senior Senator from Richmond City, to describe it either today or tomorrow. Mr. President, you do have before you an alternative. The alternative is a floor substitute that if we reject the committee amendment, we can get to. Mr. President, for a number of years, I've heard some complaints about the section of the code in education and health, and they really have revolved around three sections. One is that there is an ultrasound requirement in the Code of Virginia. That, as you'll recall, was quite controversial. It came in two different forms. The floor amendment that would be available to you actually takes out, takes out the requirement that you have the ultrasound. Mr. President, it does say that if the standard of care is that you do an ultrasound, then of course you would do the ultrasound, and that would be provided to, to the mother. Mr. President, the other item that we often hear is that there was a provision within the Code of Virginia that seemed to indicate that if a woman ever had a miscarriage, that they still had to show the ultrasound, and that, that made no sense. And so the substitute, if you were to get to it, would, would, would also remove that. Mr. President, the other item that the floor substitute would get to if we had an opportunity to get to it, is it would remove what is called the hospital standards, and it would replace it with the 2010 version, which is more of, of the clinic standards. Mr. President, I think also there has been a discussion from the gentle lady from Richmond and others stating understandably that some of the information under informed consent was not accurate information. The floor substitute very clearly says two things. One, that the information must be correct, and number two is that it must be justationally accurate. Mr. President, I know that there are a lot of minds that are made up about this bill. I, I made up this bill because I, or the substitute that we could get to, because I think that on an item like this, we've had a lot of good, and some it's been controversial. I think that my bill, or my version of the floor amendment, if we got to it, would leave us with some very safe practices, some information that needs to be provided, but also take out some of the things that some have been opposed to. So, Mr. President, that's the reason that I oppose the, the, supporting the committee substitute and adopting that on Senate Bill 733. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank the Senator. For what purpose Senator from Henrico, Senator Dunamet, rise.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to speak to the amendment.
Senator has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I hope that this body will give an opportunity to consider the floor amendment. We had a lot of testimony in committee that talked very much about the idea of access and safety, talked about this procedure maybe being like a colonoscopy. And I will tell you, as a physician, this is not a procedure that it's like a colonoscopy. There are consequences, both physically and also emotionally. It's something that should be addressed with great prudence and respect. And I think that the amendment is being offered by the Senator from, always terrible at that. Thank you. The Senator from Bedford allows the opportunity to make sure that Virginia has access, but safe access for women who pursue abortions. I hope that you will consider the floor amendment. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank the Senator. Do any other Senators other than the patron wish to be heard regarding the committee substitute? Seeing none, the senior Senator from Richmond City, Senator McClellan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would ask that we adopt the committee substitute and not the floor substitute. And while I appreciate the Senator from Bedford's efforts to make the current law more palatable, I'm afraid his floor substitute does not go far enough, particularly on the ultrasound issue. His substitute would still require that if an ultrasound is performed, that the physician must provide the woman with a copy of it, a printed... must provide the woman with a copy of it, a printed copy, and put it in her medical records. Now, under some circumstances, there are physicians who do not recommend that the woman look at the ultrasound, and there, I'm going to give you a couple. This was actually testimony that was given in a recent court case that was misconstrued down the hall a little bit. There are cases where there's gross fetal abnormality, where there is a pregnancy that was very much wanted, where decisions about what to do with that pregnancy have been delayed as long as possible, but the decision is ultimately made to terminate that pregnancy. You've heard me tell some of those stories on the floor in the past, but I'll give you a couple of examples. There was a patient whose fetus had developed the most severe form of spinal bifida that had horrific deformities. The specific case mentioned in testimony was a fetus that had no brain develop. And in these cases, the physician may feel that it is in the patient's best interest not to look at the ultrasound in those cases because of the effect that looking at it might have on them. And that leads me to the informed consent section, which would still remain in the floor substitute. We need to leave, just like every other medical procedure, we leave the details of the informed consent to the provider based on the particular circumstances of the patient. That's what we need to do here, because when we try to legislate the standard of care, when we try to legislate and insert ourselves into the provider-patient relationship without fully understanding what is happening with that particular patient, we make mistakes. And we sometimes cause more harm to that patient and to the doctor-patient relationship. And so while I appreciate that there's difference of opinion on this procedure in general, I do not think that we should not only insert ourselves in the doctor-patient relationship and mandate the standard of care, but put it in the criminal code. Just like every other medical procedure, it should be left out of the criminal code. And so those are just a few of the reasons that I would oppose the floor substitute and ask that we adopt the committee substitute instead.
Thank the senator. For what purpose, Senator from Bedford, Senator Newman, rise.
Mr. President, speaking briefly.
Senator has the floor.
Mr. President, I'll mention that the gentlelady and I talked about the miscarriages, and we took that out. And if gross fetal abnormality was to, if we get to the floor substitute, I'd be glad to add that to it. So please don't let that sway your vote. Mr. President, I would also say that if we don't do this, the bill that is before you in the form of the committee substitute, for the first time in the history of Virginia, you will have non-physicians performing a physician task. And that is in the bill and the substitute that is before you in the committee. There will be an amendment, I understand that we will have to take PAs out, but even if we do, nurse practitioners will still be left in. Mr. President, I hope that we would reject the committee amendment.
Thank the senator. For what purpose, Senator from Virginia Beach, Senator Kiggins, rise.
Mr. President, I rise to speak to the bill.
Senator has the floor.
I would just like to speak to the committee amendment regarding the nurse practitioner, the role of the nurse practitioner, as that is my profession. The complications that can arise just during an abortion procedure with the side effects, it's an intervention that nurse practitioners are not normally proficient in, it's not included in our clinical training. We've taken out the physician assistant with Senator Newman's amendment, and if we are taking out physician assistant piece, the nurse practitioner piece should also be removed. The severity of that procedure, and now nurse practitioners have independent practice authority, which is a wonderful thing, but it is not meant for use in a setting like this, in an abortion facility, to do this type of invasive procedure. So I speak against especially having that piece in there.
Thank the senator. For what purpose, the senior senator from Richmond City, Senator McClellan, rise.
Thank you, Mr. President. Speaking very briefly.
Senator has the floor.
You will get to a floor amendment that will take physician assistants out, but just to respond briefly to the nurse practitioners, the bill makes clear that nurse practitioners would only perform procedures that are within their scope of practice. There are multiple types of abortions, particularly in the first trimester, which is the code section we're dealing with. Nurse practitioners, it is within their scope of practice to provide medication, and some abortions are through medication and not through procedure. Second, nurse practitioners are allowed to do procedures that are similar, including endometrial biopsies, medical management of early pregnancy loss, and IUD placement, and other procedures that have complication risks that are similar. ACOG, in a letter to the chair of the commission, fully supported in the addition of both nurse practitioners and physician assistants to be able to perform these procedures within their scope of practice, which the bill makes perfectly clear. If it's not within their scope of practice, as determined by the two state agencies that regulate them, then they would not be able to perform the particular procedure. Finally, 15 other states allow nurse practitioners and physician assistants to perform these procedures. And so this was fully vetted in the committee, and for those reasons, I ask we reject the floor, we adopt the committee substitute. Then we will not get to the floor substitute, but we will have a floor amendment.
Thank the senator. For what purpose, Senator from Henrico, Senator Dunham, rise.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Speak to the amendments.
Senator has the floor.
I apologize for speaking again. I just feel very strongly that we need to be very accurate on this. The procedures that nurse practitioners currently do in Virginia are not in any way associated or relevant to the scope of doing an abortion. A complication of an abortion can require an immediate laparoscopy, which is a major surgery that nurse practitioners will never have in their scope. And a sentinel feature of the practice of surgery is that you are able to manage any complication, even if it's an unusual one of any procedure that you do. So I wanted to make that very clear, because that was asserted also by somebody who's a subject matter expert in Virginia, works with nurse practitioners, NPAs, in providing abortion services, who also is opposed to this bill. So I just want to make sure we're very clear. This bill allows for consent of a woman privately. The amendment that the senator from Bedford is proposing allows for that privacy, for that consent, but it allows, it also allows to remove the ultrasound, which I have agreed with removing for quite a while. But it is providing safe practices and procedures that are in other surgical centers around Virginia and should be a part of the protections that we offer women when they seek these services. So I strongly support the floor amendment, and I hope you will reject the committee amendment.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee substitute be adopted? All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
The ayes have it. The committee substitute is adopted. Seeing eight hands, we'll have a recorded vote. Question is, shall the Senate adopt the committee substitute? All in favor of the motion will record their vote. Aye, those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes twenty knows nineteen.
Ayes twenty knows nineteen. The Senate adopts the committee substitute. Senior senator from Richmond City, Senator McClellan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would move the reading of the floor amendment be waived.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the reading of the floor amendment be waived? All in favor of waiving the reading will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The reading of the floor amendment is waived. The senior senator from Richmond City, Senator McClellan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of the floor amendment, and speaking to the.
Senator has the floor.
So this would remove physician assistants from the bill so that first trimester abortions could only be performed by a physician or a nurse practitioner practicing within their scope of practice. I ask that the floor amendment be adopted.
Thank the senator. For what purpose, Senator from Henrico, Senator Dunham, rise.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just rise to renew my belief that placing nurse practitioners even in this bill is unnecessary. We heard the senator from Richmond earlier speak to the fact that scope of practice was decided by the boards, and if there are medical therapeutic abortions that are desired to be treated by nurse practitioners, they are able to do that now. And so I think that we should be striking both nurse practitioners and PAs from this bill. And just, I guess, you know, I guess I really don't have much option here except to ask it to go by, but I'll refrain from that for now.
Thank the senator. For what purpose, the junior senator from Virginia Beach, Senator Kiggins, rise.
Mr. President, I rise to speak to the amendment.
Senator has the floor.
I would like to second what the senator from Henrico said just about the scope of nurse practitioners practicing in that field as a nurse practitioner, as a primary care preventive nurse practitioner. That is not something that nurse practitioners are prepared to do at this point. Again, just to repeat what's already been said, the complications that might arise from that, the invasive nature of that type of procedure, it is unsafe for patients to be subject to a nurse practitioner who may be practicing independently to be conducting that procedure. We've removed physician's assistants, which I think was the right thing to do, but I'd like to suggest an amendment to remove nurse practitioners as well.
For what purpose, the senior senator from Fairfax, Senator Sasslaw, rise.
Mr. President, I was under the impression that what was before the body right now was the adoption of an amendment that removes the nurse practitioner, I mean, excuse me, the physician assistant. And I was curious as to whether you, the last two speakers, were opposed to the amendment or in favor of the amendment.
Mr. President.
For what purpose, Senator from Bedford?
Mr. President, maybe this will help. I think both were correct, but I hope that the body would vote in favor of the amendment. The closer we get to someone who is capable of dealing with the most emergency situations, the better off these people will be. And so I'm going to support the motion to remove PAs. I wish that there was an amendment to remove nurse practitioners. That's not before us, but I hope that we would vote for the amendment that removes the PAs.
Thank the senator. For what purpose, the senior senator from Richmond City, Senator McClellan, rise.
I renew my motion that the floor amendment pass.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the floor amendment be adopted? All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The floor amendment is adopted. Senior senator from Richmond City, Senator McClellan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the bill be engrossed and passed to its third reading.
Thank the senator. Right before we have that vote, I wanted to rule that the floor substitute about Senator from Bedford, Senator Newman, is now out of order per the earlier vote.
Mr. President, I withdraw the floor substitute.
Thank the senator. Without objection, the floor substitute is withdrawn. Senior senator from Richmond City, Senator McClellan.
Thank you. I move that the bill be engrossed and passed to its third reading.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The bill is engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Senate Bill 160, a bill relating to holding handheld personal communications devices while driving a motor vehicle. Reported from the Committee on Transportation with a substitute.
Senator from Eastern Fairfax, Senator Servell.
I move the committee substitute.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee substitute be adopted? All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee substitute is adopted. Senator from Eastern Fairfax, Senator Servell.
Mr. President, I move the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The bill is engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Senate Bill 215, a bill relating to review of death of inmates in local correctional facilities report. Reported from the Committee on Rehabilitation and Social Services with an amendment.
Senator from Roanoke County, Senator Suterlein.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Senate agree to the committee amendment from the Senate Rehabilitation and Social Services Committee.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee amendment be agreed to? All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee amendment is agreed to. Senator from Roanoke County, Senator Suterlein.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Senate engross and advance Senate Bill 215 to its third constitutional reading.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The bill is engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Senate Bill 356, a bill relating to aircraft registration definition. Reported from the Committee on Transportation with a substitute.
Senior senator from Chesapeake, Senator Cosgrove.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the committee substitute be adopted.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee substitute be adopted? All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee substitute is adopted. Senior senator from Chesapeake, Senator Cosgrove.
Thank you, Mr. President. Now I ask that this bill be engrossed and passed to its third and final reading.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The bill is engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Senate Bill 556, a bill relating to speeding fines doubled on certain roads in Falkir County. Reported from the Committee on Transportation with a substitute.
Senator from Falkir, Senator Vogel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the substitute be adopted.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee substitute be adopted? All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee substitute is adopted. Senator from Falkir, Senator Vogel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask that it be engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
Aye.
The ayes have it. The bill is engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Senate Bill 562, a bill relating to rebuilt vehicles issuance of title. Reported from the Committee on Transportation.
Senator from Mecklenburg, Senator Ruff.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The bill is engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Senate Bill 916, a bill relating to towing fees. Reported from the Committee on Transportation.
Senator from Western Fairfax, Senator Marsden.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The bill is engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Senate Bill 932, a bill relating to use of handheld personal communications devices, school zones, and school property penalty. Reported from the Committee on Transportation, and there are two floor amendments.
Junior senator from Virginia Beach, Senator Kiggins.
Mr. President, I move that the reading of the amendments be waived.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the reading of the floor amendments be waived? All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The reading of the floor amendments is waived. Junior senator from Virginia Beach, Senator Kiggins.
Mr. President, I move that the amendments be agreed to.
Thank the senator. Will you speak to those?
Speaking to the amendments, it just conforms to the exemptions for the other hands-free driving bill that the senator from Eastern Fairfax has proposed.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the Senate adopt the floor amendments? All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The Senate adopts the floor amendments. The junior senator from Virginia Beach, Senator Kiggins.
Mr. President, I move that the bill be engrossed in advance to its third constitutional reading.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading? The question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The bill is engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Uncontested calendar, Senate bills on first reading.
Senior senator from Fairfax. Senator Sasslaw.
Mr. President, I move that all Senate bills on first reading on the uncontested and regular calendar, pages 25 through 32, as Senate Bills 96 through 955, that the rules be suspended and the first constitutional reading of the titles be dispensed with.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the rules be suspended and the first reading of the titles of Senate bills on the uncontested and regular calendars, pages 25 through 32? Senate Bill 96 through Senate Bill 955 be dispensed with? All in favor of the motion will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote?
Aye.
Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, 40 knows 0.
Ayes, 40 knows 0. The reading of the titles is dispensed with. Senior senator from Fairfax. Senator Sasslaw.
I now move, Mr. President, that all Senate bills go by for the day.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the Senate bills on the uncontested and regular calendars now on second reading go by for the day? All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The bills will go by for the day.
Uncontested calendar, Senate joint resolutions on second reading.
Senior senator from Fairfax. Senator Sasslaw.
Mr. President, I move that all Senate joint resolutions on the second reading on the uncontested calendar, it's pages 32 through 34, SJR 30 through SJR 51, be advanced to their engrossment in third reading in a block after the adoption of any amendments thereto and any member desiring to remove a resolution from a block. Please do so after the clerk has read the number of the resolution.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall all Senate joint resolutions on second reading on the uncontested calendar on pages 32 through 34? Senate Joint Resolution 30 through Senate Joint Resolution 51 be engrossed in advance to their third reading in the block after the adoption of any amendments thereto and that any senator desiring a resolution be removed from the block will do so after the clerk has read the number of the resolution? All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The motion is agreed to.
Senate Joint Resolution 30, reported from the Committee on Rules. Senate Joint Resolution 31, reported from the Committee on Rules. Senate Joint Resolution 42, reported from the Committee on Rules with Amendments.
Senator from Augusta. Senator Hanger.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of the committee amendments.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the Senate adopt the committee amendments? All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The Senate adopts the committee amendments.
Senate Joint Resolution 49, reported from the Committee on Rules. Senate Joint Resolution 50, reported from the Committee on Rules with Amendments.
The senior senator from Richmond City. Senator McClellan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the committee amendments be adopted.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee amendments be adopted? All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee amendments are adopted.
Senate Joint Resolution 51, reported from the Committee on Rules.
The question is, shall the Senate joint resolutions be engrossed in advance to their third reading? All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The joint resolutions are engrossed in advance to their third reading.
Regular calendar, Senate Joint Resolution on second reading. Senate Joint Resolution 47, requesting the Judicial Council of Virginia to study the jurisdiction and organization of the Court of Appeals of Virginia report. Reported from the Committee on Rules.
Senator from Eastern Fairfax. Senator Servell.
Mr. President, I move the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the resolution be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The resolution is engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Uncontested calendar, Senate Resolution on second reading. Senate Resolution 3, recognizing that the Virginia Beach Tragedy Fund is performing an essential government service with respect to the Virginia Beach mass shooting. Reported from the Committee on Rules.
Senator from Hampton. Senator Locke.
Mr. President, I move that the resolution be engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the resolution be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The resolution is engrossed in advance to its third reading. Senior senator from Fairfax. Senator Sasslaw.
Mr. President, I'd inquire of the clerk. Does that complete the calendar for today?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. There are any other business to come before the Senate? The senior senator from Chesapeake. Senator Cosgrove.
Thank you, Mr. President. Can we return to the morning hour?
Without objection, we'll return to the morning hour. Senator, has the floor.
I rise for a point of personal privilege.
Senator, has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ladies and gentlemen of the Senate, you know, I noticed on today's docket for the Senate Committee on Privileges and Elections, it includes two second reference resolutions, SJR 33 and SJR 58, but there's a glaring absence from tomorrow's P and E docket. Senator Barker's SJR 18, Senator Hanger's SJR 70, and my own SJR 12, all of which would approve the redistricting commission to which this body unanimously committed itself last year. All three are not on the docket. And I will tell you, I was going up and down in the elevator today, and there was a bunch of young people with their round Virginia 2021 buttons, and it was, I think they were looking, like in Pokemon, for the lost resolutions. So I would tell you that the chairman of the Privileges and Elections, Senator Deeds, has a long record of supporting redistricting reform, and this chamber, under majorities of both parties, has passed similar proposals for many, many years. In recent weeks, however, there have been subtle indications that the previous enthusiasm for anti-gerrymandering reforms and some other senators on the other side of the chamber may be waning a little bit, and I hope that's not the case. As a sponsor of one of the second reference resolutions to establish a nonpartisan redistricting commission, it's my hope that the chairman of the Committee on Privileges and Elections and my colleagues across the aisle and on my side of the aisle will prioritize the passage of this measure. With only two regularly scheduled meetings of P and E before crossover and a substantial workload remaining, we should put to rest any doubt about this chamber's commitment to fair and nonpartisan redistricting reform. Thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the senator. For what purpose is the senator from Southern Fairfax? Senator Barker, rise.
Mr. President, to a point of personal privilege.
Senator, has the floor.
Mr. President, I can assure the Senator from Chesapeake that things are moving forward, and the resolution will be scheduled for a committee, in the committee meeting of Privileges and Elections, and I fully expect it to pass this body.
For what purpose is the senator from Franklin County? Senator Stanley, rise.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise for an announcement.
Senator, has the floor.
Mr. President, members of the Senate, tonight is our fourth annual New College Institute reception. Hopefully, you've gotten the handwritten letter that I sent you, and of course, our invitation. New College Institute is leading the way in providing credential programs and offerings of education to those in South Side and Southwest Virginia that otherwise may not have those educational opportunities past high school. We're going to have our interim executive director, you may remember, Secretary Karen Jackson, will be there today, and it's at a special location, Mr. President. It's located on 26 North 8th Street at the law offices of the Stanley Law Group. Serving all your legal needs, but today, serving beer and wine, okay? So I want everybody to come out there and have a good time, meet some board members there, and the Stanley Law Group would love to host you tonight. So thank you, Mr. President.
For what purpose, Senator from Hanover? Senator McDougal, rise.
Mr. President, I'd ask the gentleman, does he have any ale wife or alley weave at this?
Senator, has the floor.
There is nothing for you, Senator McDougal. Nothing. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank the senator. For what purpose, Senator from Western Fairfax? Senator Marsden, rise.
Thank you, Mr. President. Rise for potential introduction.
Senator, has the floor.
I had a scout group pop in for a visit, Scout Troop 1345. I'm not sure that they are still in the gallery, but if they are, I'd love us to give them the warm welcome of the Senate. They're from Fairfax County.
Thank the senator. I think they were here earlier. We'd like to welcome and give the warm welcome of the Senate to Scout Troop 1345. For what purpose, Senator from Loudoun? Senator Bell, rise.
Thank you, Mr. President. Rise for an announcement and a point of personal privilege.
Thank the senator. You have the floor.